Call the May meeting of the Huntington Township Planning Commission order. First item of business is Planning Commission reorganization, which we have chairman, vice chairman, and secretary. Right now, I'm chair, Tom's vice chair, and Roxy's secretary. Entertain motion to nominations for chairman.
I would like to nominate Ted for chairman.
Okay, is it second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
So move up. Now entertain a motion for vice chairman.
I nominate Tom.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded for Tom for vice chairman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So move. And then secretary, entertain a motion for nomination for secretary.
I'll nominate Roxy to continue as secretary.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for Roxy for secretary. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so move. So stay the same. In conjunction with that, you know, reorganization, I just want to state for the record going forward, we got new procedures going here without Gus here. And I want to maintain a minimum amount of conditional approvals going forward to the supervisors. So when it gets to them, there's just few items for them to work with and not large amounts of information has to be taken care of before it gets out. Scott, for your benefit, I, you didn't hear me out. We're gonna try to minimize the amount of conditional approvals moving forward, you know, moving forward to the supervisors. So that there's very few items handed off to them. And there's always some, but we gotta keep it, keep it down to a minimum. And the other thing I want to do is, I want to make a policy as, as chairman, I'm gonna not entertain actions off color, comments from here or off out of the audience about discussions that don't pertain to planning, zoning, or comprehensive plans, or things like that. So just be warned, I'll shut you down quick. So, and that includes the audience. So, a little bit different than what we've been doing. Okay, next item is public comments on the agenda items. Does anybody have an agenda to hand out? These are copies. Roxy, give them.
Well, there is, there's up here if anybody wants.
Yes, I got mine.
Is there any, any comments on the agenda?
Yeah, I, JVI, I noticed seems to be on your agenda.
Hmm.
Monthly, I'd say. Me and my neighbor here, she's my neighbor, we live on Old Harrisburg Road.
Right.
I'm sorry, can you say your name?
Your name.
Jeffery Decker, Ken Sunset Lane, York Springs. I live on the corner of Old Harrisburg Road and Sunset Lane. She lives on the other side of the road from me.
And your names?
Julia Barosius at 6735 Old Harrisburg Road.
Spell your last name, please.
B-I-R-O-S-I-U-S.
E-S.
U-S.
U-S. Okay.
I'd like to be involved in the township. You'll probably see me more meetings, but I've been working 12-hour swing shift since I was 18 years old. I worked 12-hour nights, 12-hour days, I swing. So I can't, I can't be here at the meetings, and I'm not sure if I'm talking to the branch board about this or not, but I would like, can I ask what the end goal for JVI is? Do they present that to you when they come in and want to do something with the piece of land? Can we as residents of Old Harrisburg Road, it's been taking the onslaught of a lot of dump trucks up and down that road constantly. And I don't know if you know this or not, they will go into York Springs, they go north on 15. They go out to Hyler'sburg, again on 15 north. So we're south of them, we take the brunt of it.
Right.
Can, can I ask, am I asking the right board what they might have presented to you as the end goal? Or maybe a better word would be, what is their vision for that piece of property? What are we, what can we expect?
Well, it's, it was a land development plan for their main office, and as far as I know, it was their equipment storage and things like that back in there. What, what they're doing right now, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but they're hauling fill material in, because they gotta, they gotta raise the backend.
I see they gotta build up back there.
They gotta raise it up like 50 feet from the base grade up to get it so it's leveled out back in there.
Higher.
Now, I, I suspect, I'm not sure about this, but I suspect that once they get done with all that heavy hauling, that, that will calm down some. And not to say it's gotta go away, because they, they gotta...
It has calmed down.
They'll, they'll take equipment in and out of there to projects, you know, they, they do bridges and all kinds of stuff.
Yeah.
So, but they'll move equipment out to a project site, and it'll be out at that project site for a long while. And they won't be hauling dirt in there.
Mm-hmm.
As far as I know. I, I can't say for sure.
Now, why, why wouldn't you guys have that, their vision of what they want to do with that property?
Uh...
Well, we, we do.
Yeah.
That's what the land development plan does. When he's saying he's not sure, he, he don't know.
Well, I'm, I don't want to commit to exactly what they're, you know, they're hauling dirt.
All right, Ted, let me ask you this.
Yeah.
Your sister Pat talks to my dad.
Yeah.
She's complaining about JVI trucks over there where she lives, over there in Dillsburg.
Yeah.
So is that all their trucks, that whole big fleet of trucks coming to us? Because I understand that property's up for sale.
Yeah.
So is there end game to bring, I, I think there might be 70 trucks, dump trucks, is that coming into our backyard?
Scott, is there room for that many in that, what they proposed?
Not, they don't have the parking area for the 70 instruction vehicles.
No.
But what they are doing is they're, they are closing their Dillsburg office and removing their, all their home operations to Old Harrisburg Road. So they'll probably try to squeeze them trucks in there, I would think. They just...
They have other locations.
There's not, there's really not the room.
Okay, they do have, they are gonna have other locations than you think to have their trucks.
They don't put the trucks on the land development plan, but they'll, we have the parking area in the land development plan.
Right.
So as Ted's, Ted's pointing out, we get so much information on land development plan, and then we use that information to recommend to the supervisors to approve it or not. They have a conditionally approved land development plan at this point. But it's not every detail, because that is not our job to count trucks and those sorts of things. But it is our job for parking areas and drainage and making sure it's in, in compliance with zoning. So, and I, I, I'm not surprised they're, they're heading south instead of north, because the north intersection is so dangerous. I believe, I could be wrong. PennDOT's discouraged them from going north. And so they're, that's why they're headed south, for safety reasons. So we have, I, I, forgive me if I'm talking out of school here, but I'd, I'd suggest you look at the land development plan so you can see where they're headed. And you would've seen that if you would've been coming to the meetings previously. It's not gonna answer every one of your questions, because it doesn't, it's not meant to answer every single one of our questions, because we don't, again, like a good idea, a good example is, we don't count trucks, but we know the parking area and we know how much room they have. You know, I've seen their, their Dillsburg property, and we looked at that, and we were considering this. And I can't, I'm with Scott, I can't imagine they could put even half of their trucks that they had at Dillsburg here. It's just not the same kind of property, and it's not same grades and those sorts of things. So, but I think the best suggestion, correct me if I'm wrong, would be to look at the land development plan, and then we can discuss it further. They're conditionally approved, but there's a long way to go yet with that property.
Tom, you're telling that they're talking about a maintenance facility for, equipment maintenance facility? That's the reason they're moving the ground in there?
Yeah, that's, it's a...
That's part of the plan, yeah.
There's a building goes in the back, down behind the old furniture building there. And that'll be maintenance for their equipment and stuff in there. So I, why I'm vague about what I'm saying, I don't, you know, we say, we're saying there was not enough parking in there, probably that they can bring all their vehicles and all their equipment in from all over the place. And it's a construction company, and they operate things like projects and stuff, they'll have equipment here and equipment over there, and maybe a certain amount of it coming back in here, but it's rotating around at different times, you know. Hope, in their mind, they want it out all the time, out on projects, you know, making money.
Equipment sitting there isn't making them any money.
Yeah.
They want the equipment out of there.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying about all the traffic. It's, it should, should be here at the initial development stage with all that, the loads of dirt that they have to bring in. And I heard somebody say they were getting some of that from in around Gettysburg, so that's not, that's not the only reason why they, they're using the south entrance, but they can't, loaded trucks are gonna have a tough time coming up that hill in York Springs.
I get that, coming up, not going down.
Yeah, not going down, but...
Before we get to, I drive dump trucks where I work at.
Yeah, so you know what, you know what we're saying.
I get that.
Yeah.
Going, going down, getting on 15 north, I think could easily be done.
Yeah.
Going that way, but I, I get it coming back.
Coming back loaded, you know, yeah. But that's, the plans, there should be copy of the plan...
There's a copy of the plans in the office.
Back in the office, yeah.
Well, I was asleep for this JVI thing, but they got, got my attention now, and calling these trucks going up and down Old Harrisburg Road. And now I know we're gonna talk about E and B clearing, and I understand that's tabled till next month?
Yeah, that's not, that'll be, yeah, discussion next month. Yep. So, Maria?
Jim, what was that? This fellow here, he, he addressed my concerns, and with businesses and land development plans, I understand that, but does this zoning look into the business plan of what these places that we're inviting into the community are built? In other words, there's more to it other than just developing the property. For example, EB, which's been tabled, it's a very scientific operation, where you have to look at the state and ask yourself how many cubic yards of product are gonna be on there and runoff and so forth. And this fellow's saying that you got a big operation, and everybody here is saying, well, they can't fit as many trucks as the operation has on that ground. Well, is that in the planning and in the zoning on businesses operating within the confines of the, the earth that they're on? Does that come into discussion? And I, I just was coming over here on the way, and there was a fellow with a 16 by 16 drone in field. Is this township keeping up with technology? Then I look up, and there's two phone things on the way with electronics coming off. Is this township keeping up with technologies and everything else that go with what we're bringing in? You just can't say, well, here's an acre of ground, you got, what's a big pole, and there's a telephone there. What's that telephone doing to the community? Or what are we doing, inviting 50 trucks into an operation that can only park 20? Is there ordinances that are thought through and involved? Are we asking these people for the business plan?
They, they present a plan to us with their projection of what they want to do. And that's basically, I mean, you gotta accept what they present to, I mean, if they're saying...
Well, you, you, you don't have to accept what they present, you listen to what they present, and then you go into the laws and you see if they can do what they're doing.
Yeah, we, we can't project or try and think, well, they're gonna use, be 100 vehicles going in there, why are you only asking for 50? That's not our place. They come in here with a plan, and it says, there's 50 spots there, or whatever it is.
Right.
And that's what we got. Does the plan meet the ordinance? That, we only got the ordinance to go by. We got the subdivision and zoning ordinance. If it meets that requirement, that's all, that's, that's what we're, this board, and we only recommend anyhow. So...
There's things you gotta look at. Is it wired or, I mean, how many people are in there?
There's provisions.
Offensive permits, all that.
There's provisions in that ordinance to, you know, that...
To do all.
We go through that. We go, we go through, in the full planning process review, we go through that.
So in the event that we go through that, and you, you approve whatever, and then they exceed and they break the system, so to speak, for, the best way I could put it into words, and they, they go out of bounds, what happens then? That's my question.
Well, it depends on where they're out of bounds.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's under our jurisdiction, and it's a, a permit or a zoning issue, we can recommend to the supervisors to take action on that.
Right.
If it's a county issue, the county can take action on that. If it's a state issue, the state can take action. So there's a lot of ways to go out of bounds, and we would, would listen and evaluate appropriately if it's within our purview to evaluate that. There are some things that aren't.
Right.
I just have to move over from the mic, mic voice carries to you. On the JVI trucks going down Old Harrisburg Road, I don't go that often to Gettysburg, but when I do go, I have, I have counted nine trucks coming up. And by the time I'm done at Wiser the Bank, I'm coming home, and they're coming back empty. So when I'm going down to Gettysburg, those trucks are full of soil.
Right.
Of fill. Now, they were working on some kind of a property, I don't know what they're doing, I, rumor positive, it's going to be a development off to the left, and there's a big gigantic , I would say, construction pond.
In Gettysburg, in Gettysburg.
But that's where they were originally working.
That's where I heard where they were, where they were getting excess soil from.
Like, I've witnessed over, since they got here, and since they had that big pile of fill on their property, I thought, are they bringing fill in here and then just truck, having their trucks go the shortest distance to take it where they have to?
Well, they're taking, as far as I, as far as I know, they're taking the fill in there to their site. They, when you, when you fill 50 feet of height, that takes, takes a lot of material. And that's, that's why you're seeing so much activity there. And once, once that fill was in, that site should calm down. I mean, Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that'll, you'll have the cars, you know, right now, while the office is open, and you'll have equipment going in and out for repair and, and back there, but you're not gonna have, as far as I know, you're not gonna have that extensive amount of vehicles, trucks going in and out there hauling dirt.
Now, Old Harrisburg Road is a state road. So for access to the state road, you have to have a PennDOT permit. PennDOT requires a traffic study. The traffic study was done and reviewed by PennDOT. So based on their criteria, they know approximately how much vehicles and how much traffic is gonna be there after construction is done.
Do we get a copy of that?
Yes, the traffic study is here. So after everything calms down, after construction, you'll, you'll start to see a little more normalization. It'll be mostly just employees coming in and out, like we said, and turnover from construction vehicles if they need some maintenance, or if they're in between jobs, something like that. You shouldn't, you, we shouldn't be seeing, you know, 40 or 50 truck trips a day.
I'll tell you, health and safety, I view top priority.
Oh, it is.
And I'll tell you what.
That's why we have these rules.
Walking or riding the place center along the side of Old Harrisburg Road is unsafe. And when Roxy pulls out down there at Willow Lane, that's a bad place to pull out. I, I pulled out of Sunset Lane and followed one of their trucks down towards Willow Lane, 70 mile an hour. Why that's 55 there, I don't know. I drive East Front Road every day, and it's 745. But it's, it, it's hazardous. Did you anything, go along the road, walk, ride, do you anything? Get it, put it in the mailbox?
I know it's dangerous.
You're on suicide mission.
It's also dangerous when you have a pickup truck going 70 miles an hour down the road too, so it's...
Well, that don't have, you know, 40, you know, 24-ton material in the back of it.
Well, if you get hit by a full-size pickup, you're gonna end up with the same result.
Anyway.
Moving, moving on, we're gonna, I need to approve the minutes of the April 28 meeting. Everybody had a chance to review those, and...
Yep.
Is there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented?
No.
Entertain a motion to accept the minutes for record.
I'll make that.
Motion to Tom, second to Kyle. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
See, zoning officers report, there is none this month, right, Scott?
Right.
And it's, we're in a little bit of turmoil here.
Right. I just have a, just one small, small comment to make, is that the zoning department will not be doing building permits anymore. That is being taken care of by the building inspectors, MDIA.
That's, is Jim gonna be doing most of that, Jim Zerfing?
Yes.
Okay.
He's handling that.
And is, is it your intent that he's gonna attend these meetings, or is that not necessary? Because you'll have the information.
No, he's not gonna be attending these meetings.
Okay.
But he will be giving the township a monthly report.
That you'll present?
Yeah, I will share with the board.
Okay.
It won't, it might be a week, a month or so delayed.
Okay.
It won't be from yesterday to three weeks in. It'll, it might be a little longer than that, because he just gives it three, four months a month.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, and on the agenda, we want to thank Gus, who was our zoning officer for 26 years of service to the township. He was here back, I guess it was 1999, I think it was. He was here before we had, had zoning, actually, came in, so. Next item is engineers report. Scott, you have, you handed out copies of that.
Nothing new on Greenborough Road. We're still waiting for Brightspeed to do something with their line before we can finish out the restoration process.
Can you be specific there? What, what is...
There's, there's a cable that's running from pedestal to the stream that is right on the edge of where we're gonna be grading and where this fence is gonna be again. And I'm having a difficult time getting Brightspeed to anything.
Okay, and that, is it a DSL line?
Yeah, it's a communication line.
Okay. I would offer you maybe to take that, if we're gonna take that offline, because I do have connections at Brightspeed Senior Management that has committed to me that when we need something, they will respond.
Okay, we're gonna need that for the next project as well.
Okay.
Here's a Brightspeed line that goes right over a culvert that we're gonna be ripping out.
Okay, let's, let's talk about that offline then, okay. I didn't know, I didn't know those were issues, so it's good. I'm glad you brought it up.
And we had a, a hard rain last week, Wednesday or Thursday, and we had some, some, the new culvert was tested, and it held up pretty well.
Good, good.
If you need, wanna see some photos, you can let me know, and I'll give you some photos of it.
Go.
The Myers Town Road, construction's getting ready to begin. We had our pre-construction meeting this morning with the contractor, so that's gonna be starting pretty soon. The update to the subdivision land development ordinance, that's still with Todd for his review before it'll go to the supervisors.
Has he given you an estimate of when that will be done?
No.
Okay.
Plans under review, JVI was conditionally approved. I spoke with the engineer today. There was a, a minor notation change to the EMS plan. So I told him he's gonna have to bring it next month, get reapproved. The type of change, I've required him to bring, come back to the township for reapproval. Just to make sure everything is consistent between the land development, the stormwater, and the EMS plan.
Okay.
But it's just a formality, there's, there's no substantial change, just to the EMS plan.
Okay.
The 4J form...
Oh, you were just talking about LCDM?
Yeah.
Or JVI.
JVI.
Okay. All right. You skipped over LCDM then.
No, it's not there.
Oh, you're on the report, not the agenda. Okay.
I, I took, yeah.
Yeah, he's not on, he's...
I don't even know why Gus had LCDM on there.
Okay.
There's, there's no land development change or anything.
Okay.
They got a building permit to do some building work.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, I, Gus tended to leave things on.
Engineers report.
Correct. Yeah, he left things on. Okay, thank you. All right, all right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take them off there.
Yeah, please, if we're not talking about it, it should come on.
Yeah, we're mixing up the agenda and engineers report.
Yeah, we're on the engineers report.
Okay. 4J form, Ken, Scott made a, a notation change on the plan, and he was telling me it doesn't need to be reapproved. Well, it's not up to him. I brought it back out, it was in the, in the office. There was just a small notation made on the, on the sewer planting portion of it.
On the mod, module?
Well, not just the module, but it was on the plan too.
On the design or site or...
Well, it's not even the design, it was, it's on the notation for the, for the sewer plant.
Okay.
So I, I understand that you, you're, someone already signed it.
Yeah, we already signed it last month.
It still needs to be reapproved. Is that right? We do have a noble business.
Okay.
For the EB clearing of Dillsburg property, the, the new land development plan, I talked to the engineer last week. He's gonna be ready for, he's gonna be here next month to talk about the plan after he addresses some Conservation District comments and whatnot. He does have our engineering comments and the county comments. He's working through those now.
Okay.
This is for the, the retail area, this is the new land development plan.
The, Old Harrisburg Road.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know that Conservation District had comments there.
Yes, for, for a disturbance greater than one acre, a DEP and PBS permit is required.
Right.
So they're reviewing that.
Okay.
As part of the state requirements.
All right. So nothing for us to do now?
Correct. They'll be here next month to talk about that.
And they don't need, they have till July 27th until they need a time extension.
Yes.
Okay.
The Gloucester Single Family Plan, received a plan for review, and I've issued comments this past Friday to their surveyor, so that's, that's gonna be ongoing for another couple months, and we can go through all of my comments. And it was a pretty, it was a pretty bare bones plan, so there's, there's a lot of work for him to do, even though it's just the one single lot subdivision. You know, there's, with, with the house construction, and it's, you still have to check all the boxes, and you skip the boxes.
Yep. All right.
And that's the end of my engineer report.
All right. Okay, next, moving on to whole business. Okay, next, moving on to old business. The JVI report.
Yeah, I mean, the plan's been conditionally approved. Gus keeps it on here. I I understand because it's not finally approved, that we can keep it on there until it's finally approved.
Is there a, we got the conditional approval, so is is a time, there's no timeframe then to work with?
Yes, after conditional approval is given, then ninety days to complete the conditions.
Okay.
And at the last supervisors' meeting, they requested a ninety, a thirty-day extension for that.
Okay.
Was that granted?
Yes. So they've now submitted the, a copy of the approved permits to me and there's, I received warning against that public improvements. So I will do that and get that right back to them so they can get that posted.
Okay.
Are the conditions met?
I have not seen if all the conditions are met yet.
Okay.
He told me, they told me it was. I'll check and make sure.
Okay.
Report on LCDM.
No.
Nothing to worry about.
That should be taken out. And then the four J farm, we were talking about that. As far as what what was added, I mean, was it mine, you said it was mine or?
What Ken told me was a small, some verbiage related to sewer planning had to be changed because of the sewage enforcement officer.
Okay.
Is it on these drawings?
That's what he.
The new language?
That's what he told me. If they were here, I I didn't have a chance.
So you haven't had a chance to look at it?
They're the ones we signed last month.
Probably, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you know, he had them here and I I got here as fast as I could.
Okay.
Tonight's meeting.
Well, you should review the language and give us your assessment before we approve it.
So we won't.
So I think we should table it.
Yeah.
And give Scott a chance to look at the language.
Make sure it's.
Because it's Scott's call whether, I mean, Ken doesn't call whether it needs to be done or not.
No. So I'll need a motion to table the four J farm LLC plan until township engineer has a chance to review the revision.
And I'd call it the reapproval, so it's there's no confusion over the fact that we approved the one that's now been changed.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made, but Tom, second to Ron. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. I think it's all the old business.
Yep.
Moving on to new business. That we talked about, the EB clearing along Old Harrisburg Road. The plans, your your plan is to have that ready for next month. But they have to get a PENDOT permit. They have to go through soil conservation.
Yeah, there's twenty-three items on your report for approval of the changes. Yeah.
Plus your your review.
Okay.
Now, if they, like I said earlier, if these conditions, there are certain conditions that we can move forward with, like DEP approval and possibly PENDOT approval, but anything else, I wanna try and have it cleaned up so supervisors don't have to deal with a lot of odds and ends out in there. So it's our job to make sure that's done before it goes forward.
Yeah, we we need to make it easier for the supervisors than we historically have.
Right.
Because there's the confusion over was that approved, not approved? What were the conditions? And and we need to make sure, Roxy, that all the conditions as part of a provisional approval are noted.
It's pretty much outside agency approvals is what's gonna be conditioned.
Well said.
So that's, nothing really going with that. I guess, is there anything else?
That's that's all we have on the agenda.
Okay. That leaves us with public comments.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Jeff.
I'm sorry, I, you know, I'm uneducated and I'm being a pain and
No, you're not.
I asked you to educate you. But now, like, an outfit like JVI and EB clearing, when they come into our township, they have a, they have a, an idea or a vision of what they're gonna do. They buy a piece of property. Now, seems to me that they buy the piece of property, then they gotta go through all of these approvals and everything that you're talking about. Is there like a pre-deal made before they kick out the money for that piece of property?
No.
Oftentimes, it's a contract first, the property pending plan approval. That's what a lot of times it's what that real estate transaction is. They don't go through with closing until after they get, okay, so EB clearing, that that's pending? And that, I don't know.
No, they don't know.
They do on the.
They do.
Yeah, so they thought that they kicked out the money for it and they're not sure if they can do what they wanted to. Well, it wasn't just recently that they purchased, they purchased it a while ago.
But your point's still right, that somebody may purchase property and then not be able to get approvals. I mean, that absolutely, that happens with a one acre, single-family home where they can't get get a septic field to work.
Yep.
So those things happen. And it depends on how much risk the buyer wants to take on how they build the condition into their purchase.
It can be a risky, it can be a risky business if they, you know, if the developer, depends how they set set things up. Yep. Are there any other comments? Not hearing any. I guess the next meeting is listed on there. Next meeting is June.
Second, the twelfth.
Twelfth is a supervisor.
Twelve is a supervisor.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty-third.
Yeah, the Planning Commission is the twenty-third of June at seven. What's the, what's that other meeting there?
That's an, yeah, we don't, that's up to the supervisor.
Okay.
There is a a hearing though, right?
Zoning hearing?
Is it zoning?
Yeah, there's a.
That was postponed from?
That was postponed, right. They're gonna have to reapply
Okay.
for for the zoning hearing because they filed it, you know, without everything that they needed and in a full name of the person owns the property. There were just lots of issues.
Okay.
Where was that?
They requested to withdraw.
From that here?
From that here.
Right.
Okay.
So they're gonna have to reapply.
And who are the they? I I know it hasn't gone before.
Right.
Car Leach.
It's all, it's also small midget car racing, something or other, something.
Is that on South Ridge Road?
It's an organization that does.
It's for games.
In the games where they had the rodeo.
Rodeo.
It has something to do with kids driving the.
Those little carts.
Little carts.
Okay.
Between the cross between a full wheeler and a spring car, I guess.
Yeah.
So is that hearing for June, is that still on for that?
Here's what I know. They have an attorney who reached out to our attorney to set a date. I don't have the confirmation.
Oh, okay.
As yet.
Okay.
As Scott mentioned, they asked for an extension to give themselves more time to get the information.
Okay.
Reapplication.
Okay.
Gus accepted the conditional use application as it was, but there's issues as Scott mentioned, so.
And it wa, it's a conditional use here?
Yes, it's conditional use here, that's correct.
And and before the hearing, they will come before the plan, give us.
That's what I'm gonna have.
Because because it wouldn't have worked out that way the last time.
No, correct.
Which was part of what puzzled me.
Correct.
All right.
It will come before.
That was good, that was good.
And we get to review the the
Before formalization.
Before it goes to hearing.
Right.
Good.
Before the.
Yeah, okay.
That's that's an actual new step. We we need.
It's it's in, it's in the code.
It's in the code.
Yeah.
Other townships do it that way, yeah. Maria? All right, yes.
Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't Mr. Bridgeables announce that he had, the person had come in or the organization had come in and then they built the go-track, the go, you know, without a permit, et cetera? Is is, am I correct on that?
They did not build anything.
Excuse me?
They did not build anything yet.
Oh, okay, okay.
There's, what, there's a rodeo?
There's a rodeo.
Existing rodeo was in that location.
The property owner does whatever he wants to do on his own property.
Yeah, okay.
They might have a quad or something that they've kicked her up about, but I mean, it's nothing organized.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So not hearing any other comments. I mean, I'm gonna entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that.
Motion made to Tom, second, second to Kyle. All in favor, say aye.
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 So moved.